Well, thank everyone for coming out to tonight's town council meeting. If everyone could please stand and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance, this is the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing if you'd like for Mr. Cooper.
I felt like the Lord would have us to pray the Lord's prayer together. So if you know it, would you join me and we'll use debts and debtors. Our Father, which art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread and forgive us our debts as we forgive our debtors. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom and the power and the glory forever. Lord Jesus, we are grateful and thankful to live in the United States of America. We're grateful, thankful to live here in Hamilton County. We're thankful for the freedoms that we have and the government that we have. Lord, you ordain government and Lord and people are placed in positions of authority. We pray, Lord God, that you would check our hearts today and our attitudes today. And that this would be a place of peace. This would be a place where we look to you first and foremost for the wisdom that we need. The scripture says, without you, we can do nothing. Lord, we can do some things, but we mess it up without you. So father, give guidance tonight, give wisdom tonight. This is very important. This is the grassroots of what America is all about. We're citizens, we're neighbors, we're friends, we're even family. And so, Father, help us to be cognizant of your presence here tonight. I'm sure there are issues that are contentious sometimes. There are issues that that need to be discussed in a Christlike manner. And so, Father, watch over these proceedings tonight. Lead us and guide us in paths of righteousness for your namesake. And may this community be blessed because of the leadership that we have here. And Father God, I pray that we would walk in that forgiveness that you talked about in that prayer. Lord, that you would meet the needs of the folk that are here tonight, the needs of the people of this community. Lead us and guide us into the future of this community. And Lord, may everything that's decided, said and done really be in the best interest of of all of our citizens. Or this is a great place to live, it's a great place to worship. Uh, many of the folk in this room have been my friends for many years. And Father, we cannot get through this life by ourselves, we need each other. And so, Father, we need to keep the communications open. We need to walk in love, we need to walk in forgiveness, we need to walk in your grace. And so, Father, may your name be honored and glorified by every attitude, every statement, everything that's said and done in this meeting. And beyond even the things that are said outside of this meeting, uh, between members of this council and this board. And Lord, just use our hearts and our lives for your kingdom, for your purpose and for your glory. And we just thank you for it tonight in Jesus' holy name and everybody said.
Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. I'd like to open the meeting, Liz, can you do roll call?
Thank you.
Here.
Daniel Brack.
Here.
Eric Differ.
Here.
Levi Strach.
Here.
Ronald Stone.
Here.
Michael Foot.
Here.
Has everyone had a chance to review the October 7th minutes? And if so, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from the October 7th council meeting.
Second.
A motion second as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, um, special presentation, 236 Street Improvement Project Update, Stephen T.
Okay, good evening, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name's Nick Batta, uh, with Crawford, Murphy and Tilly, happy to be with you this evening. Um, if I go there to slide one and I'll buzz through here, my presentation and obviously happy to take any questions throughout. So, um, I'll do a little quick introduction, talk a little bit about kind of the study that we've been working on for you the past couple of months. Talk a little bit about what that study's shaping up, um, in terms of a way we, uh, the town can move forward with an improvement project of 236th Street. And then kind of close it out with what some of the next steps are going to be. Um, again, my name's Nick Batta, I work for Crawford, Murphy and Tilly. I fully recognize you may not have ever heard of my engineering company. We're, um, been around for 80 years, we're founded in Springfield, Illinois, and we've been here in the Indianapolis area, uh, for over 20. We have about 600 people and, uh, uh, we work out of our office, um, up by the pyramids. Um, Rajesh is here with me, Rajesh Koppel, he's one of our roadway design engineers and, uh, he's been helping me. So we were hired to kind of do a little bit of a reset. As you all are aware, uh, Hamilton County did, uh, progress forward with an improvement project of 236th Street. From State Route 38, uh, to the Teeters Branch Bridge or basically where, uh, 236th Street starts the widening to go east. So we wanted to do a deeper dive, uh, just, just to see how far they took that project and, uh, where they were going with it. Uh, maybe reassess some of the design decisions that were made, take a look at, uh, what they were proposing for lane widths and shoulder widths. And then find opportunities to reduce the cost of the project or at the very least to maybe reduce the, the footprint, uh, that was being proposed. Um, the scope of our study closes out by identifying what we see is just some key project risk points that, you know, nothing that can't be overcome. But some things that we, uh, the town would want to have their mind forward with as it moves forward. And then to talk about a funding opportunity with the state of Indiana through NDOT, um, that, that has been recently announced. So again, the limits of the study went from State Route 38 to Teeter Branch. We, we envisioned the road being broken up into three different segments and you see those listed there on the, uh, on the screen. So the first would be the segment from State Route 38 to, to LeMong Road. Uh, this would be kind of a lower speed segment, 30 mile an hour design speed. To some degree, you could envision it as an extension of, of, of how NDOT's reconstructing State Road 47. Um, I realize the numbers may be a little hard there to see in the image, but I'll just kind of talk through a little bit. So that shows kind of the basic width that we're proposing the road to be. So there would be one lane in each direction and that lane would be 11 feet wide. And then in this segment, in this segment alone, there would then be a, a concrete curb and gutter up against the lane. And then we are proposing a sidewalk along the south side of the road and the south side only of, uh, of six feet. Um, the cost estimates that I'll present to you assume, uh, the LaMong Road intersection will, will go back as a one-way stop, conventional intersection. Um, as a little bit of a side study though, we did take a look at what a roundabout would look like at LeMong Road. And it would add about $1.1 million to it, to the project. Um, but it would fit in pretty well with the, uh, the right of way that's already been deeded over to the town. The second segment is a little bit of the transition segment as we think of it. So that would be from LeMong to Six Points Road. Um, so in this segment, the design speed would be 10, 10 miles higher up to 40. If you look again there at the, uh, the proposed widths, again, same one lane in each direction, 11 feet wide. With a, a six foot shoulder, um, is what we're proposing, which is a little narrower than what the, what the county was proposing. Um, this would have open ditches, so no curb and gutter through this segment. Um, there would be no sidewalks or, or trails or anything, uh, alike in this segment either. If something like that were to come along, it probably would be maybe on, say, the developer or someone to add something like that. At the intersection of six point roads itself, understand that's been a, a big safety concern, um, uh, for the town for quite a while. Um, we're proposing a, a two-way stop, but there would be sightline improvements, uh, made at the intersection so that you could, uh, safely see if you're coming up on Six Points Road. You come to the stop, you look either way, you'd be able to have the proper sightlines to make a decision. Um, again, as a little bit of a side study, we did look at what a roundabout would, would look like at that intersection. And in that case, it'd be, it'd add about $1.3 million to the project, a little higher than LeMong Road because of the, the grading is, is more that would need to be done at Six Points Road. Since it's kind of at that sharp crest. And then the final segment would, would be the project from Six Points Road to Teeter Branch. The widths of the road are exactly as I just explained, 11 foot lane in each direction with, uh, uh, shoulders and, uh, ditches. In this segment, the design speed would jump up to 50 miles an hour. This would be very consistent with what 236th Street looks like, then already improved as you continue eastward from this point. So just some key things that kind of, that we noticed as we were laying out some of these concepts that, um, you know, would be kind of your risk factors as, as we move ahead with a project. The first is, uh, the relatively newly installed, uh, transmission water main, uh, by Indiana American. Um, that, um, if, if it had to be relocated because of a project by the town, that would be the town's cost to bear. Um, and obviously transmission water mains, uh, sound expensive and are difficult to take out of service. So we would want to avoid that with, um, with about any project that we would do. Um, finding the right drainage outlet between State Route 38 and LeMong Road is a little tricky. Um, there's, there's not really an obvious location. Um, our study proposes acquiring a little extra right of way on the south side and one of the, um, undeveloped parcels, if you will, to have a, a small detention pond. Um, but that's something that may need to be investigated a little more after the survey is complete. Now, there are, I believe it's three, uh, recognized county legal drains that would be impacted by the project. So that would require coordination and a permit from the county surveyor in order to use as an outlet. Um, although the, the road is not as wide as what the county had envisioned, it's still i- is wider than what it is today, particularly the ditches. Um, the, the, the drop off from the roadway is, is a safety concern. And so we're trying to flatten out those ditches to, uh, to improve safety. Also, the ditches are, are kind of viewed as, that's roadway insurance in some degree. The better that stormwater can get off the pavement and, and go away, uh, the more, uh, stable the pavement base will be, um, for, for years and decades to come. But that does encroach into a lot of the residential front yards. Um, and so that, so that is a, is a downside to that. The project is not envisioning any relocation of any properties, um, in order to do that. But again, the right of way line will get pushed closer to some homes and some of the locations. And so here's a cost comparison from the county project, the previous design versus our study. So that first line there, the construction cost estimate, you can see by narrowing up the pavement widths, as I mentioned, it trims about $300,000 off the construction cost. The big savings though is on the amount of new right of way that would be needed. Um, the previous design, because it had wider lanes, wider shoulders and a shared use path, it was going to need over 24 acres of new right of way. Um, this revised concept has basically cut that in half, as you can see. Don't exactly know what the cost savings associated with that, because we just don't know the details of what, um, the previous project was proposing. But you can see it's about a million dollars in new right of way cost, um, for this updated design, which includes not just the cost of the land, but also the, um, professional services, the appraising and buying that goes with it. That's right, the, the final memo that we'll prepare for you is going to have some line items for potential utility relocations as well as potential environmental mitigation. Like for instance, impacting jurisdictional streams or wetlands. Those are 2% of the construction costs, they're, they're, they're a line item and a line item only until you really dive in. We think we have a concept though, that is certainly avoids the wa- the transmission water mains, we feel good about that. Um, there, there are some other utility impacts that would happen with this concept. Um, overhead electric and, and, and telephone, however, those are within the right of way. So those are the utility companies to bear if they have to relocate. So then some next steps, we're going to finalize the study that we've been working for you. Um, should actually have that here in a couple of days. Um, again, that study will have pretty much what I've presented to you here tonight, but also then some detailed, uh, drawings, uh, that you'll be able to see that kind of get an idea of. Especially like, say, what some of those right of way encroachments are going to be and what some of the intersections are going to look like. Uh, thankfully, NDOT just recently announced that they will have a funding application opportunity here starting in a couple of weeks and it'll close on December 5th. Um, so with your blessing, I believe the idea is to submit an application for this project using this study. Um, you'll be competing against cities and towns. I think it's from 5,000 a population up to 50,000 across the state. Um, it's, it's always competitive, as you know, um, with things like this, but we do feel like we're in good shape because we have a, a study. We have a very defined purpose and need and goals and, and those things always shine well about those opportunities. Um, the fund, i- if any money is awarded, it wouldn't be made available though till about a year from now. Because it's in the next state fiscal year, so they wouldn't be able to program until after July 1. Um, so given that, I know we have talked with Todd about the potential of maybe proceeding ahead with some actual formal preliminary design activities. So it's maybe something we'll think about, uh, next year, uh, just to continue to progress ahead with the project. That's, that's a potential next step.
Nick, typically after applications made, when does NDOT notify the recipients of either award or you've been denied?
Yeah, it's, it's so wild, you know, it's so wild that I, if I would have guessed, I'd, you know, March, I would say it would be probably announced around in March. And then I think the idea then is to get it programmed in July.
And to be clear, the, the estimated cost is not something the town has to put up front, it's a pay as you go up to a certain point, is that correct?
That's correct, yes. If you get awarded $2 million by NDOT, um, and you, you could get just partially awarded too, like, you know, we'll ask, you know, obviously for full amount, but you may not necessarily get it. But, um, yeah, it's a pay as you go kind of reimbursement system. Um, you hire your design company, you pay them once a month and then you turn around and they get reimbursed at up to 80% each, each month.
Yeah, I was going to say ratio again, what is the, the money is that could be awarded the maximum?
So at a, at a, I guess a minimum of, if you will, that the town will have to, uh, commit 20% um, of the cost.
I think Hamilton County said one of their strategies for winning work was to change that ratio in the state's favor.
Obviously, it never hurts if you have more money and you can say you can commit 35%. I'm, I'm going to guess the application shows more competitively. But, um, in my experience, especially for, so for more of the communities between five and 50, there, there's very few that really are able to do that. I mean, mo- most go in saying, we'll commit for the 20% and, and, but again, if, if there is more available, it, it would make it more competitive.
One thing I think would work in our, that is work in our favor is the awareness NDOT has over this particular project. They're not such a stranger to it. Uh, the, the director of this pro funding program, she's keenly aware of, uh, all the history, so.
Well, they've already approved it once.
That's exactly.
Yeah, that, that's right. And the, and the county did have, did, uh, have an approved environmental study that was completed, um, last fall. It would have to be revised because obviously it's a new project sponsor, but that's a huge milestone to have completed. A lot of the, the background studies would really just need to be updated at that point. You would be certainly not starting from scratch, whereas a lot of your competitors in the application, you know, they are starting from scratch.
Any further questions? We will look forward to your final report and appreciate your time today.
Yeah, my plan is to get that into you here by the end of the week and, um, and then we'll start working with, with Scott on the, uh, the funding application. So thanks for your time.
Thank you.
You are welcome to head on out if you want.
My wife would probably appreciate that.
Stick around for the whole thing, it doesn't matter. Uh, we have two items on the consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to review those, I think we probably need to maybe discuss what the, uh, I thought there were some emails back and forth. Questions regarding the monon, change of order?
Uh, I'm not sure about the change order or the pay applications, I hope change order here. Yeah, that's the activity that they've. The description of the, the services.
I don't recall who initiated the emails, but does anyone have any questions on either one of these? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, we accept the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
A motion and a second as presented, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes, old business ordinance 2025 dash 10, 2026 budget form four. Mr. Higgins couldn't see by the podium. You got down to the final revision?
I do, and I felt really good till about five minutes ago. But I'm viewing that as a July problem, not a, not an October problem. So I, I'm going to take the next three items on your agenda and kind of compile them because it's the, uh, budget adoption, the appropriation reduction for 2025. And a budget update and just address all three of those, um, with my time here at the podium this evening. So, um, the 2024 budget, uh, is ready to be adopted, similar to what was advertised and, uh, dealt with in our public hearing, uh, two weeks ago.
Mr. Higgins, you said 2024.
2025 or 2026, I'm sorry. It's been a very long day.
Yes, and your numbers, guys.
With a lot of numbers, so the 2026 budget, uh, that is before you this evening is substantially similar to what was discussed at the, uh, public hearing two weeks ago. I say substantially, uh, because we made some reductions in the appropriations to the general fund, uh, in order to become balanced. Uh, that's part of the mathematical gymnastics that we had to go to, through to avoid budget cuts. Uh, we made some reductions to 2026 appropriations in consultation with all the department heads, which were very helpful. Uh, to remove some things that really weren't necessarily critical to be in the 2026 budget that were more wants than needs. Um, we also, uh, tweaked some of the revenue numbers for 2026, uh, to get to where we have a fundable budget across the board for all funds. Everything that you were anticipating up until five minutes ago is funded in this budget. Um, the reductions that we're making to 2025 are almost a record low. Uh, there are no general fund reductions for 2025. The reductions are all in minor funds in order to make sure that they were balanced, uh, at the end of 2026. Earlier this afternoon, I did, uh, finalize and submit the, uh, excess levy appeal for 2026 for the motor vehicle highway fund. As you'll recall from our meeting two weeks ago, uh, that excess levy appeal, the last time that we're going to get an opportunity to do that because of assessed value growth across the, across the state. Would allow us to ask for an additional $181,000, $188,000, I'm sorry, uh, to be used for the MVH fund. Uh, to fund substantially a chip and seal program in the rural area that would allow us to do, uh, 10 miles approximately of road every year. Uh, to get us into a rotation of every 10 years, we would have, uh, redone every, uh, road in the township or in the rural area. Uh, that application was filed this afternoon, we should hear something, uh, prior to the end of the year on that request. Um, with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have about the budget book, about the 2026 budget, about the status for 2025, about the levy appeal. Uh, yes.
Sorry, I missed two weeks ago, I tried watching the video, but there's a lot.
There's a lot.
This excess levy, is this on the town side or rural side?
It is on the entirety of the town.
Forgive me for maybe, maybe simplistic questioning, I was, uh, I came into this fairly late in the year, I missed almost all of the original budgeting. At least to my understanding, and then was gone at the last meeting due to a prior condition. Um, explaining this budget to taxpayers, um, there appears, when you look at it, to be a significant discrepancy between the adopted budget and the revenues. Um, to the tune of, I mean, like several six-figure sums.
When, when you look, and, and that's a good question, I see where you're going. So when you look at the ordinance or at the budget book and you look at what was advertised and you have tax levy.
Mm-hmm.
And you have your budget that's approved.
Correct.
The tax levy doesn't fund 100% of our operations. So really, property taxes make up roughly 48 to 50% of all the revenue that the town generates.
Right.
So the rest of it comes from, uh, certified shares, local income taxes, about $1.7 million that comes into the general fund. That's anticipated plus other state fees that come in. So when you look at what property taxes fund, do property taxes fund everything that we have? No, absolutely not. So the, so there'll be that discrepancy.
Using those numbers, say 40 to 50%, the primary question that I have received is the general fund discrepancy. Um, wherein, like you said, the, the adopted tax levy is certainly not a 100% funding mechanism. But there's a significant difference to the layperson between $6.2 million and .5 million. Is, is that just something that's being overlooked? Um, simply like on the, on, on, on my side where I'm not seeing where this funding is happening. But I've gone through the budget book several times since it was released to me last Thursday. I don't see the funding mechanism and that may be an oversight on my part with inexperience. But it's difficult for me to explain that to people who are concerned about the fiscal future of the town. When there appears to be a, a dramatic difference there.
Yep.
I came up with about $5 million worth of funding.
Well, so, and, and I'll, I'm happy to discuss this with you after the, after the meeting as well. But, uh, first, from what we advertised as a general fund expenditure to what we're actually approving tonight. The difference is about $300,000 less and that's some of the cuts that we made, uh, in talking with the department heads to the 2026 budget. But if you go to, and I'll direct you to the Form 4B, which is towards the back of the budget book for the general fund. You'll see an 18-month kind of recap of how we fund the budget. From existing cash today, plus revenues that were yet to receive this year, less expenses that we plan to take this year. Along with, uh, revenues and revenues that are expend, expected next year, in addition to property taxes. You'll see where the budget funds down to in the beginning, and we had this conversation a year ago.
Right.
We always underestimate revenues and overestimate expenses. And so at the end of 2026, we are forecasting a general fund balance of about $11,000. Last year, I think when we did the budget and I proposed it, we were funding or estimating a fund balance in the general fund at the end of the year, about $77,000. Currently, we have a little over $2 million in the general fund. We never spend every dime that we anticipate spending through the appropriation and we never bring in less than what we anticipate on revenues. And I went back and looked at the prior 10 years, uh, which were done by three different financial advisory firms to show that we had always projected extremely low balances and wound up at multiples of that. So I don't forecast that as being any different. It is just the gymnastics that the state makes you go through. Uh, we're making some cuts to the budget, uh, for 2025, we won't spend everything, uh, that we're authorized to spend. And so we'll have excess dollars there. So i- it, it's all buried into the Form 4B, if you look at the numbers at the front, you really don't see it.
Well, that's what I was looking at this afternoon and where I came up with my discrepancies.
Yeah.
I would be happy to take that out of this. And I have, uh, additional questions, um, in that Form 4, there are several transfers in from another fund, the general fund, the police fund, fire fund.
Yes.
What fund are those coming from?
So. So into the general fund, we are moving $350,000 from the utility funds. And that is to pay for the renovation of this building. So we could have waited to do that in 2026, but the idea was we were going to fund this out of those utility funds. Those are non-appropriated funds. So those contracts will be awarded by the town, will be part of the general fund. That's where the expenditure is, we're offsetting that with a transfer of the utility funds, which would be a one-time transfer. The money that's going into the police fund is very similar to what we experienced earlier this year. The difference between the police fund and the fire fund at the town level post-reorganization. Both funds are created and paid for partially the expenses of the police and fire departments. The police department started out with zero cash in January and then gets its cash primarily from tax distributions in June and December. So we were incurring expenses in the beginning of the year, not getting paid back till January, then occurring are June, then occurring expenses now not getting paid back till December. We wanted to avoid the appearance of a casual deficit in the fund, so we advanced. advanced from the utility funds to the police fund funding to get us through to the end of the year. That gets repaid when the property taxes are received in December, which would take us back to a zero balance. So we need to just advance that cash, uh similar to a tax anticipation warrant that a lot of schools have done. Same thing in the MVH department, but at a much lower uh amount. The fire department was different because we had funds uh from the township that transferred over that were restricted for fire use, and the township fire and EMS fund, that was about four hundred thousand dollars that came over. So we had cash that was able to fund that activity. And so it is just a timing of cash. It is not, and I've had conversations with both chiefs, this is not that we're spending more than we're bringing in. It's just a matter of the timing when it is. It's considerate that you started a new job, you have expenses, but you're not going to get paid for six months. Somehow we have to fund those expenses for the first six months, and this is what that does.
Thank you for that explanation. I appreciate it.
Just to reiterate the fact that we are not using the utility funds to finance our budget.
We are not.
Jim, I know you made a comment when you gave your presentation last meeting about possibly holding off on raises until July.
Yes.
What's your thoughts on that still, doing that? And then I'll explain my reasoning, so.
There there are several thoughts that have been expressed to me by some of the department heads. One is to match the safer grant. I think there are some union issues that might be related to the fire department about doing something earlier. And and these are raises for non-elected officials. If if you would like to give yourself a raise or the clerk a raise, that has to be done by the end of the year because it has to be set before January one. Part of me says, I'm not sure what's going to happen in the legislature come December or January, whenever they're called into session and what they're going to do. I've heard some people, I'm not totally on board yet, talking about positive changes that are going to be made, more so than I would have thought. But I still think there's a likelihood that it could be worse uh too for some communities. Uh, so this budget incorporates what the staff wanted to include, which was about an eight to ten percent raise, depending on the departments. My challenge to them was, I don't think that, I mean, it's fundable. We can do it. I think there might be other needs for that uh that you would have to address. Uh, but maybe deferring that increase until mid-year would allow us to see where the legislation comes down and get a better feel for the second part of the Senate Rold Act One, which is the the proper or the income tax issue. Um, so I I'm indifferent on it. I I just think there may be some some cautionary pieces that would tell us to wait.
So in the event, we we waited till till July. Um, and this is very similar. The question is similar to kind of how we're operating the school, whether still doing their bargaining and things like that. So would that raise still be full, like retro back to January one then at that point? You know, if we gave them a raise in July.
It it could.
Would it would it retro?
It could be. It could be. I mean, one, I don't think there was clear guidance, nor did I seek guidance uh from the council about what the amount of a raise should be.
Sure.
So we've budgeted for a raise. I will tell you that the numbers include eight to ten percent. I'm not advocating for an eight to ten percent pay raise, so I'll put that on the table.
Absolutely.
First. The idea was that, and what I had told the department heads when we talked about the July, I said, you might have a better chance getting a ten percent raise in July if we only had to fund it for half a year. Because it wouldn't be retroactive. It would be looking forward. Or it could be a five percent pay raise that would go retroactive. But that that is totally an option that you have when that time comes. You can address non-elected compensation anytime during the year. I I'm just telling you that from a budgetary standpoint, we have factored in a number that met with the general approval of the department heads.
Sure. And I appreciate that. I'm I'm just, you know, I see you see on social media as other surrounding municipalities or, you know, approving their budgets and different things going forward, and then automatically police, fire, you see hiring processes kicking off, you know, starting January first, twenty twenty six of a starting pay of this. That just worries me a little bit, and so that was my question.
I I address this if this very issue at length in the excess levy appeals that I filed this year to justify why. And it's the competitiveness of salaries amongst municipalities. You all feed off of each other, right? The state police raises uh salaries for troopers. People at sheriff's departments go to the state police. Sheriff needs deputies, he goes to the small communities. And it it just, it's a it's a feeding frenzy that goes back and forth. And so you lose somebody to somebody that's offering a higher pay or compensation package, then you have to raise compensation to go find somebody else and and pick them up.
Till till somebody else raises there. I mean, it's just a, unfortunately, it's just a ongoing battle.
It is.
And it was just a just a question.
And no, so it I think you have options on how you deal with employee salaries during the year uh and both in the terms of how much and when. Uh, even if it's staggered with a small increase at the first of the year and then followed up later. Uh, just you have factored into your budget eight to ten percent uh pretty much across the board for raises.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Higgins?
This is doubtful consideration, Tim.
It is.
Well, if there is no further discussion, I'll entertain a motion for adoption of the resolution.
I will make a motion. We, maybe, I find the number here. Uh, I'll make a motion. Uh, we adopt ordinance number twenty twenty-five dash ten, uh the twenty twenty-six budget.
Second.
Have a motion and a second as presented. Liz, can you do roll call vote?
Uh, Mr. President, uh council members, I would request to abstain from this vote based on my lack of information leading up to my appointment to this position um wherein most of this discussion was had. I would 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 request that.
Ron Stone?
Yes.
Eric Diford?
Yes.
Daniel Bragg?
Yes.
Lee Mike Schrop?
Yeah.
Yes. Thank you. What's next?
Uh, resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, which is a reduction of certain appropriations in the twenty twenty-five budget. Uh, as I said, these are not nearly as extensive as they were last year. Again, this is just to help balance the funds to make sure that we're fundable. The motor vehicle highway fund, we reduced appropriations in the twenty twenty-five budget by eleven thousand dollars. And again, just to make sure that the math worked through the end of next year. In the police fund, fifteen thousand dollars uh appropriation reduction. Uh, and those were to make sure they balanced. The CCI fund, which is the capital improvement fund, the opioid funds are all reductions pretty much tied to, we can't spend the same money twice. We've appropriated all these amounts for twenty twenty-five. We've not spent it yet. We'd like to spend it in twenty twenty-six. But if we don't reduce this year's appropriation, the state will tell us you're spending it this year. We would have to go through additionals next year. So there's no plan right now to spend these funds in twenty twenty-five, so we're saying let's eliminate those appropriations. And then they're included in the appropriations in the twenty twenty-six budget. So it's nothing more than moving it from one year to the other. But I would be happy to answer any questions about the the appropriation reduction.
Do you know where exactly that you're getting moved to this time?
They're same funds, same categories. It's just if you if you have a dollar now and you say you're going to spend the dollar, but tomorrow you say, you know what? I'm going to save that dollar till next year. The state understands that concept, but they don't trust you with that concept because they're afraid if you budget it for next year and it was this year, you'll spend it now and then you'll wish you had it later. So they're saying before we'll allow you to appropriate those one-time dollars that you have. In twenty twenty-six, you have to show us that you're not going to spend them, and we say we're not. They're saying prove it by passing this resolution. So this this would be part and parcel to the budget uh that gets submitted later this week.
Thank you.
Any further questions? entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion. We accept resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-two, a resolution by the town council reducing the budget.
Thanks.
A motion and a second as presented. Let's do roll call vote again.
Once again, abstain, same grounds.
Ron Stone?
Yes.
Eric Diford?
Yes.
Daniel Bragg?
Yes.
Mike Schrop?
Yes.
Tyus and the men?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. President, just one final comment on a personal note. I greatly appreciate the cooperation of all the department heads. They were very forthcoming with their budgets and their plans, their needs, their wants, and then really a definition of their needs uh to make sure that we got everything that that they were looking for uh in order to carry out their functions. So greatly appreciated. It made my life a lot easier. I think it will avoid some of the conflict that we had early in January where people didn't understand with the new funds, exactly where funds were coming from and being paid from. We we left the budgets basically intact for next year, so everybody has a clear path on how their departments will be funded.
Good, good. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next item up is the twenty twenty-six community crossing matching grant application approval.
Good evening. Um, as part of the community crossing grant application, the Enda would like to have a form of some sort. I talked to Zach about this. Something on record that allows Mr. Devaney to be the signatory for the town. I have to present something to them as part of the application process, so I don't know what.
We can prepare something later.
I'll make a motion uh to grant President Devaney signing rights for the community crossing green.
Right.
A motion and second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? Passes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, community center remodel price proposals. So we're going to do a short kind of discussion on this. I know that we might have kind of bucked the system a little bit on how, I don't know. Anything? Okay.
Okay, so we've been working on this for a while now, trying to uh get contractors to bid. Um, we had one contractor um kind of kept coming back and forth. He did finally give us a bid, but it wasn't for the whole everything that we had asked him for. Um, we asked another contractor above and beyond, gave them several opportunities to bid, never followed up with us or anything. And then we finally got Watson's remodeling out of Arcadia, and he has been phenomenal with communication and all that. So that's the one bid that we have that's exactly what we have asked for. Um, the bid he he presented was forty-eight thousand nine seventy-five. With that, though, we had originally presented the drop ceiling, and I know a lot of a lot of you liked that. We would really like to go with the drop ceiling just because for the fact that for future AV problems or anything like that, instead of ripping wiring off the ceiling, if we could put it under the drop ceiling, we just think that it would be a better thing for the future for changes that would come along with the AV. So with that, it changes the bid to fifty-three thousand four sixty-six, which we knew we needed. You know, the other two bids because we're at that fifty thousand mark.
So now that we're over that fifty thousand threshold, you want to uh take action? Give Michelle authority to approve and accept the uh only sponsor.
Okay. So nothing, so this bid is for that room?
This is for this room only, and it's for all the construction. It will be building the walls out here, the stage, the walls back there for the other AV equipment. Um, tearing out the wall and the door, the window and door and filling that in. Any, like I said, uh wiring, anything like that is, that's that bid. We have the flooring as a separate bid.
Okay.
And but they're all well under the threshold that we need to be at.
This doesn't include the conference room?
No, it does not.
Okay.
So with with everything, we're looking at roughly a hundred and seventy thousand, but that's the biggest room. This room's not going to hardly take anything. Conference room won't take near as much.
So do you have all the other bids in?
I do.
Today? Okay. So we need to do these. We need to do this one, but we need to approve.
Yeah, but right now I would have prepared this.
Okay. Any questions for Michelle? I think these align with the photos in the back of the room.
Yes.
Are we doing the full seventy-seven?
No, just just the construction cost for the room for the fifty.
Fifty-three thousand four sixty-six, but once again, when it gets into the wiring.
I would, should we do like not to exceed sixty, just
Think that's fair.
To give a little leeway if there's some surprises in the walls. And then if something goes above that, then we'll have to come back and discuss.
Okay.
Sure.
I'll make a motion uh Grant Michelle uh signing rights for the quote uh for the construction of the community center south room, not to exceed sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
A motion and second as presented. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? Passes.
President, I do have a, we, the desk. Uh, we are reaching to the point because we have had her quote for so long. Prices are starting to increase, and that's a nine to twelve week window. I don't know if that, just for the desk alone is thirty-four thousand five seventy-nine forty-six, but that is like a built-in just like we've showed in the picture. And then there are furniture quote that we're going, I have three quotes. One's uh twenty-five thousand one ninety-one oh five, twenty-eight thousand seven eighty-one twenty-five, twenty-five thousand five forty-nine ninety-six. We're going with the lowest bid. There, it's the same company. It's JSI out of Jasper, Indiana, and it gives us the twelve-year warranty and just, like I said, it's right here in Indiana, and we went with the lowest bid on the all the furniture in there.
Michelle, does this they give it for the council?
Yes. So that will have the built-ins for uh laptops, microphones, all the wiring.
Discussion?
Yes. Um, I was looking at this dais in particular with their with their bid, and it does not appear to include wiring and outfitting. Maybe I'm reading that wrong.
It doesn't include the hardware, just includes the features to add the hardware.
Yes. So that's my.
You said it's thirty-eight thousand dollars.
It's thirty-four thousand five seventy-nine, which is a lot less than what we were originally quoted. It was like around sixty thousand.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any further discussion? There are ten motion.
This is just for the desk, correct?
Yes, it's from complete office supply. But to lock in our prices because she said she's actually seeing fifteen percent increases. But if we go ahead and. Approve it.
Dollar amounting in, Michelle.
For the the rest of the furniture, that's the chairs for the audience. Oh, just the desk? Thirty four thousand five seventy nine forty six.
I'll make a motion. We accept the quote from complete office furniture for thirty four thousand five seventy nine forty six for the council. Desks, desk.
Second.
Second.
A motion is second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed?
Aye.
Passes.
And then you want to do the furniture too?
Might as well. Get it rolling.
So we have the best option, better option, and good option. And we're going with the best option, which is the lowest price of twenty five thousand. One ninety one oh five. That will be for the. Um, legal team. Chairs, training or tables for the staff. All the audience chairs and the council chairs that will go behind the table.
That was from JSI. I'll make a motion. We accept the quote from JSI and the amount of twenty five thousand one ninety one oh five for. Furniture.
Second.
A motion is second as presented. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All as opposed? Passes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We actually have a. Moving now.
Yes.
Any other new business? Seeing none, um, I don't think we need a finance finance budget update. Attorney report.
Yeah, a few things need to work out for you all. Uh, working towards keep it slow, they could be grieving, uh, not developing area, uh, bond documents. So those. Should be circulated, uh, each month, work towards building a fee, um, sorry, at the end of November. And, uh, closing early December, uh, worked with the nineteen seventy seven on mission board on a appointment pattern. Uh, a few weeks ago, uh, working on a road ordinance as requested by Director Kirby. Uh, Director Mitch Pyler, Director Miller, and we're working on. The, uh, finishing up a few contracts related to Etika, the group your last meeting. The, uh. Maintenance building in AAA state of play for the playground. The answer to the question. What was the road ordinance? The road ordinance? The road cut ordinance. Yeah, so Director Kirby asked us to draft something, uh. I don't think you all have anything in place. Uh, I think you want to speak more to that, but, uh. Something that's kind of been on our plate.
Spoke to Mr. Nicely. Couple months ago, whenever it was, to update our encroachment ordinance to date. Um, we've done almost twenty two hundred encroachment permits. So. At fifty bucks a lack, that's a lot of revenue coming in. And I think Mr. Higgins spoke at the last meeting, finding ways to. Create revenue, and this is a very good way to create revenue. So I've asked Mr. Nicely to bolster that up. Make it. Uh, where we put it where we want it. So it's the new new encroachment ordinance that'll allow us to. Inspect and hold it, hold people accountable when they come into town. Tear up our roads, make sure they fix it correctly. Banning's engineering has already provided us with a preliminary, uh. New, uh. Road construction. Documents. So we will have something to base that off of now so we can force these folks to come back and say, this is how we expect you to fix our roads. Here's your encroachment permit. So we're just working through that process of making sure it's what we want. Any questions?
Uh, while you're up here, update on the playground equipment.
Uh, I spoke to the playground installers. Phase one will be mid-November. I think they're targeting. Fifteenth or the tenth. I don't remember which one. Mid-November. Uh, the other stuff will not be in and they will not, uh, phase two won't begin until, uh, January twenty twenty six.
Okay. All the. All the paperwork's done.
We're just, um, Mr. Nicely is working on the contract. The, uh, um, Mr. Higgins is working on the bond bank. Money. So as soon as we get all the. Ts crossed and the Is dotted, uh, we should be. Ready to go with phase one.
President, if I can.
Yes.
Playground equipment. We do have a resolution draft. You all, I know you've mentioned that there's possibly interest in. Equipment being reused. Um, that's still in case we have something drafted.
Well, even if it. Doesn't get reused, do we still need to do something as surplus? We do not? Okay. Well, the, as of right now, the the interested parties backed out. So as far as I know, unless someone contacts Mr. Kirby in the next.
Uh, well, we have, we're gonna remove it. We're gonna remove it the first week of November, so we're set and ready to go for them when they get here.
So if anybody that watches this stream is interested in that equipment. Contact Mr. Kirby.
Just be aware that it's probably concreted in. So when we remove it, what it ends up being after it's removed may not look like it is when it's out here.
Or they can remove it themselves.
Um, I did have a, uh, Mr. Williams, Austin Williams approached me about his company removing it. Free of charge for the town. All he asked was is is to have salvage rates for it. He would take it and. And get rid of it for, uh, pay the fuel bill. If that was something we would be interested in.
He's here if you want to have any.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see you.
No, you're fine. I, I, first week in November, I was planning the end of this week.
That's fine.
Too soon.
No.
But I got a couple of people kind of working and I don't get a holler out.
Nope, so. Forty eight hours if anybody else is interested. Forty eight hours. No, I'm glad you were here. Yeah. But if if no one reaches out to Mr. Kirby, it's. It's it's gone.
Is council okay with Mr. Williams doing the removal for the salvage rights for it?
Appreciate it.
Good enough. Give me a holler next week and we'll get it squared away. Any other questions?
I don't know. Anybody else?
Just wanted to up there.
Sure.
Uh, we've got various comments through the request form online for debris from the windstorm. And so far, everyone knows since God, he's already been there. So. I have just been accepting them.
Yeah, we, uh, the one that you sent earlier, we got it Monday morning when I came in. There was a tree down on the Monon. We got it Monday morning. My new, my new foreman is the person to thank for all that. Uh, Mr. Hensley is knocking it out of the park. So.
Awesome.
Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you.
Regarding that?
Regarding the playground.
Yeah, yeah.
There, Scott and I talked, we're two benches. It needs to pull the batch on the other benches. Do you want those? We'll. Just give them up. Kirby will run the payment for that.
How much?
I would afterwards get with Heidi right here. She's VP of Park Board. And that's their property. I'm passing the buck. So I don't know what your plans were for benches or anything, but. Yeah, just ask Heidi. And if she leaves and. You don't catch up with her, let me know and I can. Give you that contact info.
Anything else?
I think I'm done with you. Appreciate it. Thank you. Um. Where I lost my voice. Uh, general discussion items, go to the order for council. Say, baron, council have anything? Nope.
This time to bring it up. There's been some discussion, um. From Todd and it's kind of went through the council a little bit and it's all seemed to be very. Uh, well received. Former chief shock, uh, kind of had quite a bit of inputs on the on the Monon that came through town. Um, and Todd brought us an idea of. Potentially. Dedicating the section from.
Ohio to, uh.
From Ohio Street to Georgia Street. Dedicating that in honor of Bob, uh, kind of naming it Bob Shock Section or that's to be determined. I. Bob spent a lot of years here and did a lot of good for this town and was an all around good guy. So.
During the ribbon cutting, uh, Chief Nielsen, no, it was, um, Joe Miller. Was the one that that made the comment that. That Bob was instrumental in how we were going to navigate. Around EMC and that that's what kind of started. The conversation that Todd brought to us afterwards about, um. Dedicating the section. So I am in favor of it. I don't know if we need to. I think we ought to go ahead and and make a motion on it.
Yeah. On my, I think I have, yeah, and to. At the next meeting. Uh, their, their previous position does to how far it's signed in order, uh, that's open for discussion. It's noteworthy that, uh, I can affirm this, but you can call it. Uh, Bob is the first active duty. Uh, officer, sheriff, former, that's passed away. And I can use that stuff. My duty would certainly have to be. And, uh, as you've noted, issue Joe Miller, uh. Drew attention to Bob's input through this particular section, its alignment. And it's adjacency to the police department. So almost the police department remains there. There's something meaningful. Honor of Bob, uh, and his legacy and service to this community. Stand to be a, uh, a way to do that, not only. This time as a police officer, but his input to the trail of London. Thank you. And it would be nice to know kind of what that looks like or for them or to. This should be done really nicely. Yeah, it could. You know, the conversation that I can. I think it's appropriate to. Take all sorts of input, maybe you're not all practical, but. Is it something more that is the simple sign of iron law? Is it maybe a representation of his. Liveness? I don't know. Uh, I haven't gotten that far. Uh, with the conversation from nature of the council. And the Spanish back to Bob, like you count for book edition, maybe book in, they want it at each end of the section, maybe one in the middle, next to the police department. Uh, certainly open for discussion. Open draft, you know, bring a resolution to you.
Anybody has any ideas? Let's bounce them off of each other through email, and I think it's a good idea. I appreciate that. You thought enough to bring it to our attention.
As of like on today and it goes exactly right, uh, boss gave a lot of input and they agreed to go and destroy the trail back.
Any other items for go to the order?
Everything, Mr. President, about coordination, council footman, we shot, uh, on the employee handbook. So the coordinates today's came for, I know we got a lot of inputs. Department heads.
It's, it's, yeah, different, but, uh.
And convene before we get better, uh, in the discussion, we do have to input, we'll look at that and we'll be in a, in. Position for your approval, either late or sooner.
I think. Jennifer Miller may want to be part of that as well.
Yeah, I'll leave it in my inbox. They know I, I've, it'll circulate to you.
Any other? That's all you have? We'll move on to public comment. Um, non agenda items only. I'm going to three minutes. Anybody have anything they'd like to? Go ahead. Yes, sir. Mr. Mr. Gillum.
Harvin Gillum Sheridan, Indiana. I just, I don't know how many, uh, read the, uh, the Hamilton County Reporter. There's, uh, typically a. A, um, a piece in there called, uh, the timesheet, and it's done by, uh. Um, Ron Hall, I think is his name.
Mark.
Huh? Yeah, the counselor. And so it. He's, uh, with the Hamilton County Council, but in his thing, he mentioned. This, uh, issue that with, uh, with Dunbar. And, uh, and the agreement that's trying to be reached. What I found interesting. Is in that, at least I, if I read it right, he's saying it's sort of back on Sheridan regarding. Uh, regarding this whole thing about the path. And so I was just wondering if there was, had been any further. Discussion about that.
I think that.
I do. I didn't read that today also. I, but I.
I was interpreting it to be the decision over the presence of the path. It, it was recapping what had happened.
Okay. Oh, it's more recap. Oh, okay. Well, yeah, okay. Well, thank you.
Well, for the record, since you brought up, there's been no other action.
Yeah.
Other than your resolution. Two months ago.
As far as this council is aware, there is no, there is no path. Now, something changed. We are not aware of it, but as far as we know, there is no path. All right, Vance, you've been missing in a while. So did Heidi have something? When is trick or treat?
It is actually on Halloween. Um, I feel since the hours of Halloween from six to nine. Even though Jared's playing that.
Yeah, we need to discuss. So. Since we're on that topic. Halloween trick or treat. Um, is, does this council set the trick or treat?
Typically not. I don't think it's formal action. I think people just feel.
Well, since.
I would say not necessarily because there's nothing more emotional than trick or treat.
That's true. So just be advised, trick or treating will fall on Halloween. Like it always has for generations. And there's a way football game that night at. Flint Prairie. So that's first round of, well, second round of section.
Did she say from six to nine?
Six and nine, the, uh, parade will start at six o'clock.
Okay.
And that kind of trick, that starts the whole trick or treating.
Good.
Thank you. If you want to, get him up because I'm ready to go home. I, we don't have a red carpet for you today, so.
I don't want no red carpet, either. I will, before I start, I want to thank you guys. You do a job and no one wants to really thank you. While people want to criticize you, and I do, I'm one of the criticism, but I do think you need to be praised for what you do.
Well, thank you.
It's a tough job. I have tried to get people to come to this meeting more than once. None of them. Um. And then I asked Jennifer, and I had the zoning appeal meeting, and she told me I needed to talk to her assistant. And her assistant's not here tonight, and I didn't get a chance to talk to her. Also, I know we're writing up this new comprehensive plan. But. The fact that some property owners are buying. Shipping containers. For storage sheds. I thought there was some kind of rules against that. In the O system. I don't know.
Well, you're BZA.
I would say no. No, I'm not PC. I'm a zoning. They they never, you know, but. We need to start looking at some of these things that's happening before we get this plan. But. I've had two of, two of people say. They've came to the town. They've also come to the police chief about different properties and nothing gets done. And that's the sad thing about. We don't see. The improvements that people want done. On trash. Vehicles. Um. And that kind of stuff. Um, I know it takes time, and I've tried to tell them people that. But they don't understand that. One thing I have seen. There was a tree blown down. On property. The property owner had it cut up. But it's all laying there. Never has been moved. And whenever this trash. Accumulates. We get animals. We're getting more and more coons. Possums. And I did hear the other day, we got some foxes running around again. So, uh. But not cleaning up. And I did hear the other day, we got some foxes running around again, so, uh, but not cleaning up messes, we're gonna cause a problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Vance, did you notice that they mowed the field on two twenty-six?
But the one corner of, of, of long and buried it.
Way to go, weird. That backfired.
It did, very much so.
Be nice at some midnight, someone midnight, phone over, big ghost, or just mow that one of that.
It's for sale, or it used to be Vance, you could buy it. I know, but you could mow it for us.
Well, I, I do recommend Vance, since you are on the BZA, and we are doing the comp plan right now. And, and immediately following the comp plan, the U D O will be updated, and that is where your containers and. And those items will be directed. You might want to talk to Jennifer, get a copy of that U D O and start. Pinceling in these items as you go, because there are so many that. You'll want it forgetting what some of them, and. Well, get a copy of the new one. There, there's an existing U D O right now. It was updated in twenty-three. And, and maybe we get, I don't want to say a committee, but a focus group. There's no reason why we couldn't start on the U D O right now, in, in parallel with the comp plan. So, and the, the U D O is going to take quite some time. And when we do need. Parties involved, I was part of the last one and we started with eight people. And it took around eight months, and about month two, we were down to two people doing it. So it would be a really good time to start that, I, I highly recommend, because you do bring up valid points here. And if we could plant those into the U D O, um, it would be greatly appreciated.
They got a good portion of it done.
We'll entertain a motion to pay accounts payable.
I'll make a motion, we pay account payable vouchers.
A motion on second as presented, all those in favor say aye. All those opposed? Passes, council president's statement, I want to give a big thank you to Mr. Higgins and our directors. Um, for working diligently on putting together a budget. I know that, that through that process, not everyone gets everything that they want, but I think we did our best shot at, at, uh. Appeasing everyone, especially with what raises were budgeted, we are gonna take. Mr. Higgins' comment under advisement, um. And not to say that we're gonna wait till June, July, but we are gonna have some. Deep discussion up here on how to handle raises, um. But the fact that I think this is the first time. Through my time and, and Dave's time, that we've gone through a budget without screaming and fighting and. Um, I, I just really appreciate everyone working together, because it's not a fun time and, uh, I, I think it went really well. I don't know, you guys really haven't lived through too many budgets up here, but it is. It is a dread and, and Mr. Higgins made this really. A really good experience. I don't think there was anything else. We did the Monon ribbon cutting, oh, um. We held a. Eric, Ron and myself, along with Mr. Kirby, Director Kirby. Held a town hall chat at the Eacon Lodge last week. Um, we're trying to get up there and it was just a Q and A, we really didn't have an agenda. We're gonna try to do that on about every six, eight week rotation, um, we've probably had, what? Fifteen people?
Fifteen, twenty.
Fifteen, twenty somewhere.
So.
But it was a good time.
Yeah, like, like you said Vance, on trying to get people to come, obviously they're not coming, so we're trying to get out and spread what's going on.
Good time to meet your neighbors and all that.
So, uh, Ron and I will get together in the next week or so and, and plan the next one and, and what other council members. Are interested in going to that, well, uh, yeah, it was just mainly Q and A and just filling people in. It was, it lasted two hours.
Yeah.
And Ron supplied coffee and cookies somehow, I don't know where he got that from, but it was nice. Get sense.
You brought up something just a second ago, I saw. Is trying to control. Motorized scooters. Skateboards. I think it'd be a good idea to see. Cause we're gonna kill someone one day today, and I hate to say this, we are gonna kill someone. But not stop. They are passing vehicles coming down the main street. Doesn't need to stop, and then not just yet.
No.
What do I bicycling? On the long way of coming across. We're gonna have to do something. I hate to say it, the tunnel's dark, guys. Never worried about it.
Upcoming meetings, uh, Town Council November fourth. Other boards and commissions, Park Board will meet Wednesday, October twenty-second, five-thirty here, R D C will be October twenty-eighth. Um, other than that, I will entertain motion to adjourn. Motion on second is presented, all those in favor say aye. Aye, all those opposed? Do not leave until everything's signed, council members.
I'd, I'd see you.